Look at that, ten seconds to spare.
Bring this meeting into order of the Amador County Board of Supervisors. We just came out of closed session, 1A. Was direction given to staff? 2A, nothing to report. 3A, direction to staff. And confidential minutes were approved. Supervisor Frank Axe is on vacation, so he will not be here. He's absent. Wouldn't mind standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public matter is not on the agenda, discussion items only. No action to be taken. Any person may address the board at this time upon any subject within a jurisdiction of Amador County Board of Supervisors. However, any matter that requires action may be referred to staff and/or committee for report and recommendation for possible action at subsequent board meetings. Please note there's a three-minute time limit. Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay.
I have something.
Yes, sir.
I would like to take a moment of silence this morning for Father Thomas Relahan, who passed away, I think day before yesterday, very peacefully. After he had his tea and toast at, in Ione, where he lived out his life. Very great person to not just Ione, but many in the county.
Thank you. If you'd mind taking a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approval of the agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, 401. Approval of items on consent, anybody from the public? Talk about consent? Anybody on Zoom?
No, not at this time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I had a question. I'd like to have items 6E. And 6G. Well, never mind. It's fine. We're good, I'm good.
Okay.
Then move to approve the consent as presented.
Second.
Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 401. Regular agenda, 5A, Board of Supervisors, discussion of possible action relative to the election of the 2024 Chairman and Vice Chair.
I would move that we elect Supervisor Onetto as the Chair and Supervisor Crew as the Vice Chair.
Okay.
I believe that's the rotation, isn't it?
Yep.
Anybody from the audience want to speak? Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay. Call for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You're it, Mr. Chair.
Yep. Thank you.
Supervisor Onetto, you're.
I appreciate that.
Was he the second? He was the second.
Uh, no, Forrester was second, and you were the, you were the second.
Okay. Kind of both said the same.
Oh, I heard your voice, so that's where I went with.
Are we gonna switch seats, switch seats now?
We're gonna play musical chairs here. And for KVGC, woo-hoo!
Sort of playing musicals here.
Yeah. Get set up here. Well, thank you, and been a while since I've been Chair, so. I tell people sometimes that I'd almost rather not be Chair. It's, uh, it's easy to concentrate in the meeting if you're not, but anyway, um. I guess now we'll move on, and next item is 5C. This is 2024 Committee Assignments. Oh, excuse me, I forgot something, hold on.
I was gonna say, you forget about me already.
Also, part of, part of this agenda item is we have a plaque honoring outgoing Chairman Jeff Brown. He had a pretty, pretty good year, I'd say. It was, compared to some years, he got lucky. There wasn't, there wasn't too many of those gut-wrenching, people wanting to kill you type decisions. So we have a plaque here. And it's to Jeff Brown for being Chairman for the year 2023. And I'd like to present this plaque to outgoing Chair, Mr. Ch- former Chairman Jeff Brown. Also, before I do that, is there any members of the public that would like to address the board? And on Zoom, doesn't appear to be anybody. Well, Jeff, I have a plaque here for you. Yeah, you might want a picture up front, I think, or you want, why don't you, why don't you get right here first?
This is probably a good spot.
Well. Heather, closer's always better, so what Larry and Jer says.
Oh, hold on.
All right.
What's that? No, this is good. Okay, we're good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's been an honor due to be the Chair, so I truly appreciate this.
Thank you. Well, hey, thank you, and you did a good job, so.
I kept us out of trouble.
That and keeping the meetings going, that's, you had a lot of nice, fast meetings, took care of business. It's good. So with that, no members of public, we're good on Zoom. Moving on down, now to item 5C, this is Committee, 2024 Committee Assignments. Anyway, um. We have the committee list, and I think everybody seems to be pretty happy with the committees. Any, any questions, any of the assignments?
Mr. Chair, there was one for RCRC Finance. Normally, the RCRC alternate would be the same for the RCRC Finance, but we have Supervisor Axe on there.
Okay, we'll go ahead and make that one change, and we'll have Supervisor Brown being the alternate on the Golden State Finance. That's authority, that's GSFA. Okay.
I, I see you're crossing out the fire clearance standards ad hoc committee.
Yeah, I think it's done its work. We can always add if we need to at a later time.
I think, I just want to point out, I saw on Facebook last night from Barbara Bigelow. The appointment of Frank Bigelow to Deputy Director of Community Wildfire Preparedness and Mitigation with the Office of the State Fire Marshal. So that would be their son.
Well, that'd be good, 'cause I think he came off a ranch and probably understands probably fire and.
Yeah, that's why I pointed it out, that it's probably a good thing for, for us, although you still have to deal with the bureaucracy of the Office of the State Fire Marshal. But, um. I just brought it up in relation to that being crossed off, that we do have something positive there.
Well, the thing is, um, for a lot of years, the message has been, you know, don't get me wrong, I love trees. But we've had a real good PR campaign, don't cut a bush, don't cut a tree, save nature, and I love nature too. But if you look at it, I remember how there used to be a lot more open spots around, say, just Jackson. Mother Nature's filled them in with shrubs and bushes and trees, and if you don't thin stuff out and clean it up, at some point, Mother Nature kind of does it herself, and she. And if she doesn't have burns on occasion that are low intensity, you have a, you have a mega fire, and they're never good. So, like I've told people, especially if you're in the upcountry, clear out around your houses, and if you see your neighbor's house, you might keep your house and your neighbor's house too, so. Get your fire clearance.
You want a motion on Committee Assignments?
Yes, I would like a motion on that.
I would move to approve the appointments.
Second.
Okay, any members of the public care to comment? Seeing none, call for a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It carries 401. Moving down, item 5D, this administrative agency, Amador County Impacts Due to Proposition 1.
And I, I put this on, more for board information than anything else that was in the CSAC packet and addressed at the last CSAC Board of Directors meeting. I asked for our staff to be here today to speak to this and what they think. If you read through this whole thing, there's a lot of information here, but the impacts are likely to be a cutting of our MHSA funds by about a third, is the way this reads. And more state control. So usurping the local control. I can tell you. A lot of counties don't like what they see here, but most counties, probably all counties at this point, are not opposing it. It's polling, according to Paul Yoder, with a lobbying firm in Sacramento at about sixty-five, sixty-seven percent pass rate. I think it's really gonna be bad for counties, although they build in exemptions that you have to apply for, for small counties. You may get those exemptions, I would imagine it's likely that it'll happen. But there's just a lot of unknowns at this point. So I'd like our staff to speak to this and see what you think. Yes, it's good for behavioral health. I, I'm not sure it's gonna have a dent in homelessness. I mean, all the money they've thrown at homelessness at this point hasn't really done anything at all. And now they're gonna throw a third of this money, and what the concerns were from our neighboring counties were that with this MHSA money, we've built coalitions, we've built programs. And it's putting those at risk at this point of continuing in the future.
All of that, and.
You state your name for record, please.
Sorry, Melissa Cranfield, Behavioral Health Director. I, yeah, I would agree with everything that, that you're saying. The Mental Health Services Act is a big part of behavioral health funding. It's something that's been specific to just the Behavioral Health Department and pretty much has assisted with internal staffing, internal programs, as well as all of our contract providers. And you see all those contracts over the years and, and approve those contracts for us. The Mental Health Services Act had five original components, and the way the reform would change that is to the allocations that each county get. Instead of it going to those five different components, it's going to a third to housing, which would be just housing, physical housing, infrastructure, not supportive services. And in order for this to work, we need the supportive services. And we've had, as you all know, No Place Like Home that we've been trying to get, and we've had difficulty with that, so more money going to housing. We're not really sure how that's gonna be helpful. Small counties have expressed concern about having those funds unspent. Because that's how we are with No Place Like Home. We have eight million dollars right now that, since we can't get this project going all the way, you know, it's kind of just been sitting there. We're still working towards that, but if more money may not necessarily be the answer. A second-third of that allocation would change to full-service partnerships. Right now, because we're a small county, we have a small group of clients that fit under that full-service partnership, which is the kind of, they, they used to call it the whatever-it-takes model, so more wraparound services for folks. That part could be good. I mean, many of our clients will probably become FSP if this passes to ensure that they get the services that they need. Then the last third is all those other components with some of those taken out, like innovations will no longer exist. They're changing, so it's no longer prevention and early intervention, it will just be early intervention, so anything that fits into that prevention. Will have to be looked at to see, can it fit in a different component, or is that something that we're not gonna be able to sustain because we don't have prevention dollars? So it is going to shift how we provide services, especially with contract providers. Our Directors Association has provided a fiscal modeling tool. They've changed it several times as the updates come to the bill and what that looks like. So we're trying to get an idea of, it shows like, here's where our funding goes right now for Mental Health Services Act, and how do we shift that into what's proposed? And what can we keep? What are we gonna have to change to a different component? And what are we gonna have to try to find other funding to sustain, or will we not be able to sustain? And just like, um, just like Board Member Forrester said, there's a lot of unanswered questions. We don't know. Our Directors Association has really been pushing for exemptions for small counties, especially with the housing. We don't have, because then they said, well, you can use it for rent. Well, we don't have very many places that we could utilize it for rent. We had funding in the past for rental assistance, and because housing, affordable housing is so limited in the county, that's, that's difficult too. And one of the reasons the state was saying they wanted to modernize the Mental Health Services Act was because there was concerns in some counties, there was just lots of money that was sitting there and not being spent. So I think there's, yes, we do have concerns. We've been looking at it as our association updates that fiscal modeling tool. We keep, we keep looking at that to see, because we want to be able to keep as much as we can, but I think if it passes, there's gonna be things that we're gonna have to let go. So what are the things? How do, how do you make those decisions? It's gonna be very difficult.
Can you address the, the new accountability oversight provisions they built into this with sanction provisions, audit requirements?
Yeah, and it, and it really, it really seems like it's gonna be a pretty heavy lift. And it's going to include not just MHSA funding, which they will be calling BHSA, but it will include all of our funding streams. Part of Cal AIM through the state was to do some payment reform, and in payment reform, they eliminated the whole idea of a cost report, that we do a cost settlement at the end of the year. And so I think this is something that may be replacing it, because this isn't just looking at our Mental Health Services Act funds, it would be looking at our realignment funds, any block grant funding that we get. And it's a pretty extensive amount of reporting. They want to look at outcomes, which we do a lot of that anyway, but to, it'll be to a much, much larger scale that we'll have to be doing reporting. And if you don't meet certain milestones, you, there may be sanctions. And not really sure what that, that can look like, and, and how they're gonna, how they're gonna determine some of those sanctions based on the outcomes. And if we get to identify our own outcome measures, there's some that the state is going to define, define for us.
Those programs that have been created for mental health services, they're not going to backfill. If they take money from those to, and, and focus it more on behavioral health, the way this reads is they're not going to backfill that money to allow counties to do the job that the state requires them to do. Is that correct?
That's what it's feeling like, yes. Yeah.
And that, that'll be another state unfunded mandate, it sounds like.
Also, Richard, you'd asked about unfunded mandates, and I brought it up a number of times down to RCRC, and RCRC is looking at that unfunded mandate question pretty hard. And at some point, you know, they're thinking, there's been talk that maybe you might see some legal action and about that, so you're, you're absolutely right on that.
Well, and the lobbyist, lobbying firm for CMSP, the Paul Yoder indicated that, well, Amador could be the first one going out there and, and taking a, an opposed position on this. But with this governor, nobody really wants to get the ire of the governor focused on you. We don't want him focusing on Amador to bring sanctions down or anything else, because I could see that happening.
Really?
Yep.
No, you're right.
Yep.
Contrary to what, contrary to Poplar's message, that does seem to happen sometimes.
I just, I thought this was important to bring it to the board, because it's going to mean more unfunded programs that we're going to have to support in our budget. And it's gonna turn the money a different direction to more new programs that are, people are gonna have to deal with, probably gonna need more staffing to deal with the audit requirements. So that we don't fall into, fall out of favor and get a poor audit, and then have sanctions in place, or have the state come in and say, we're, we're gonna have to take the program over.
And you know, this, the whole mental health thing, I mean, it's become painfully obvious, there's, there's a big relationship to drugs. I mean, it's huge, and I was talking to somebody the other day, they were saying down like the Los Angeles area, the state was trying to put in place a program where if you have a hotel or motel with a vacant room, you're supposed to notify somebody in the state, and they're gonna put homeless people in there. And it sounds like the hotel owners were not happy about this, this, and the state was saying, too bad, this is how we're doing it. And they're saying what actually kind of stopped it was like, um, the house cleaners and the, and the janitors and the maids were like, we're not cleaning up at that, and we're not doing this, we're not dealing with it. I guess the state kind of said, well, let's stop and think about this, but it was, it was going period, and just, they said, we're not doing it. So they had to kind of try and try, try to figure another way to do it, but you look at it. And the issue, I guess the issue a lot of places have is when you put homeless in somewhere, you think, okay, we're gonna help homeless people, and there's surprising homeless people that would appreciate a home. But a lot of them, you put them in a place and they destroy it rather quickly. And so it's, it's an ugly question. How do you solve it? I don't think there's a good answer. Like I said, I've said it more than once, every family I know in this county of any size has brothers, sister, niece, nephew, uncle, cousin. Or if not multiples, that are on some kind of, some kind of substance abuse, and they got, they got real problems, and you try to help them, and now and then you can pull somebody out, but a lot of times you help them, and they dive back in, they dive in, they take you, they take you in the mud pit with them. It's really a challenge. I mean, and what I've kind of seen, unless, if somebody wants to help themselves, you can, if they don't, you can try all you want and talk all you want and spend all you want and give all you want, it doesn't matter. But anyway.
So though, just wrapping it up, the, towards the end, the second to last page, I mean, you can see there's six points that CSAC clearly takes a stance on, on Prop 63, the Mental Health Services Act. Every one of those six are going to be hurt by passage of this proposition, but the CSAC Health and Human Services Committee took a no position on this, and, and I would expect that to be the position that CSAC remains taking, because they don't want to get the ire of the governor.
Well. Yeah, and the only, only problem is if nobody ever takes a position, or if you don't get enough people, and I mean, I guess somebody's gotta do it, but CSAC's a, a pretty big entity. And I think if you saw some of those entities, whether it's RCRC or CSAC, say, hey, we're opposed to it, they could probably do it if they wanted.
Well, we can, I brought it for information, you can mail it over and see what you want to do in the future.
Okay.
I want to take some public comment.
Yeah, any more comments on the board? Members of the public like to comment online?
Not at this time.
Okay, well, thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Melissa.
Melissa.
Thank you, Melissa.
Moving on down, the item 5E, this is State Route 88 Pine Grove Quarter Improvement Project. And this is all the project up in Pine Grove, it's been around for quite a while. There's, it looks like there's four courses of action that have been suggested, I mean. One is wait and see if additional, as far as, one is wait and see if additional funds come from external sources that can be committed to make up the shortfall of the funding that is available compared to what the bids came in at. that can be committed to um make up the shortfall of the funding that uh is available compared to what the bids came in at. Um, or else you could award um ITB twenty-three dash twenty-three, State Route eighty-eight Pine Grove Quarter Improvement Project to George Reed, an amount not to exceed nine million eight hundred fifty-eight thousand four hundred twenty-six dollars. And B, authorize Board Chair to sign a construction contract based on the standard sample contract, contingent upon County Council and Director Public Works' approval. And C, delegate authority to the Public Works Director to accept the completion of the work and sign and record a notice of completion if no leads or stoplights have been served within the thirty-day period. And D, authorize the Board Chairman to sign the agreement or the recent claims upon completion of the project and authorize Public Works Director to release retention of final payments to the contractor. Or option three is reject all bids and direct staff to scale project back to fit the current available funding. Or option four is reject all bids and terminate the project. Um, so the board was, so we, what happens basically, bids came in um higher than what we have funding. So the board's just trying to figure out what direction we're gonna go. So um, do we have any comments in the board?
Can we hear from staff? Because that was the whole point to wait on this to hear what, if there's any hope from Caltrans for getting funds.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Richard Vila, Public Works Director. Um, yeah, this is, this was brought to you initially uh December nineteenth. And at that time, um, with the same four options, and, and the board decided to go with option one to wait and see what, what happened. Um, since that time, I've had discussions with Grace Magseal. She's the Deputy District Director from District Ten in regards to program project management. And um she had a meeting with headquarters on this issue yesterday because this is an issue that was gonna have to be um flushed through headquarters as far as getting additional funding for the project as it stands. And um, and that discussion I had with her last week was that if there were funds to be available, they weren't gonna be forthcoming like tomorrow. They'd be at the earliest a couple of months down the road. But anyway, with that being said, um, I talked to her this morning and it was a cold reception on the funding, uh, to fund the, the dollar gap for this project as it stands right now. So based on that information, um, it's not to say that down the road there may not be more funds that could be available for the project, but that would be down the road. And I think there may be some support for that at the state level, but certainly not at the amount that we're looking at now and not at the timing that we need it right now. Uh, so, um, so given that, I would make a recommendation to the board uh that we, we reject the bids for the project because we don't have the funding unless the board feels they wants to fund the, the um, the shortfall with internal funds, with, with county funds. And, and I didn't feel that was the direction the board wanted to go at the last meeting. I could be mistaken, but I have a feeling that's.
You're correct.
Yes, so uh based on that, I would uh make that recommendation. We have only another ten days or so before we have to make a decision on it. And I think we're at a position, we can have enough information to know that, or that uh we could go ahead and reject the bids. And um, and then either we can move forward to try to scale the project back to fit existing funding. Um, or if, if it's at the board's pleasure that, you know, we terminate the project. So um, that would be my recommendation, um, you know, moving forward, that we do reject the bids at this time.
If, if we reject the bids and we try to scale the project back, um, more than likely the prices, cost of the project is going to go up because of uh just passage of time and materials becoming more expensive. So if we scale it back, we should probably scale it back well under uh what we think the escalations would be. Uh, I, I think take out most of the sidewalks. That seems to be a, the big point of uh contention here anyway. And the, the sidewalks appear to be what really drove the prices up because of the uh necessity to have more traffic control.
Right, with, with the sidewalks came curb and gutter, with, which that comes, uh, storm sewer and such. That wasn't, that's not in place right now. So one thing kind of leads to the other because you're, you're transforming some of that area from a rural section to an urban section. When you add curb and gutter sidewalks and storm sewers. So a lot of those components uh are, are certainly um responsible for the high cost for the project.
Richard, just yesterday, we got a scoping memo for what fourteen point six miles of pavement from Jackson up to somewhere in Pine here, or at least Ranch House Estates. I forget exactly where this, which would give hope for the pavement part of the Pine Grove project without us having to be involved in it at all. Isn't that correct?
I, I saw that as well. It was forwarded to me and that would be my take on it as well. It's, that's a project that's scheduled several years out. I think it's two thousand and thirty.
Yeah, twenty-seven at the earliest, twenty-nine or thirty.
Yeah, that's probably the more probable, so.
But to finish that, if they're gonna do the pavement and they said they're gonna replace eight culverts, I don't know if there's culverts involved in Pine Grove. There's hope for the folks who wanted a better road as their main street. I'm sympathetic to that. And if we just came in as a, on the cafeteria plan and said, we'd like a stoplight at Pine Grove and Volcano Road, and we've got two million or two and a half million to help with that project, kind of flip the script instead of us being, where they put up the road and we put up the money. All of a sudden, we just try to improve that intersection and the access and egress for the school, whatever that comes out to. That makes so much common sense, it probably has no chance of working. But wouldn't that be a way to approach it?
Uh, I, I would agree from a common sense standpoint, that would be a good way to approach it. I think there's a, an issue of timing that may be uncomfortable for, for some folks. Um, this project, as, as the board well knows, has been going on for uh a number of years, ten, fifteen plus years. And if we're now talking about some of these improvements not happening for another five years, I, you know, I don't have the answer to that, but that, that's a reality of, of timing. Um, that could be an issue. I, you know, just to, but, but your point, it, it, it makes a lot of sense. It's, it would be good to be able to coordinate those efforts and, uh, and such. And in, in some respects, if you do paving this year or next year, excuse me, um, and in five years, it gets, part of it gets redone, that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense either. Um, unless they skip the portion that gets done with our project.
And I think it, I've only been on the board seven years now when this project's been going on the whole time. But all the holdup has been on the Caltrans with design, redesign, undesign, over-design, new director, new engineer, stops the thing should have been done. So a lot of it is really a million dollars to Caltrans overrun. Well, what the heck? But to Amador County, it's a lot of money. So if we stay in this circle, I don't see it getting any better. Where if we pull back out and just become a player, if it works out and we dedicate the money to that stop sign and the school, which seems to be the biggest safety issue, maybe not a beautification issue, but a safety issue. And Caltrans is aware of that. And they can get a stop sign put in and paid for while they're already working on the road.
Stoplight, you mean?
Yeah, stoplight, I'm sorry, stoplight. So it would just seem to me would should be our approach.
So if, if we go down that road, then the stoplight and improvements would be, would not be a Caltrans-funded part of that project. It would be, the funding would have to be locally like it is laid out right now. Um, one thing I can't address very well is the funding that's in place, how long we can keep it in place? If it has, if there's a sunset date on it or whatever? Because we keep talking about getting the project moving so that, you know, if, if we don't do the project for three years, is that an issue? Hasn't been asked.
No, I was speaking of terminating the beautification project and going to start to work on the concept plan for the pavement project, which includes culverts and sidewalks onto certain parts.
Mm-hmm.
And we've already given them the widening for Pine Grove. I mean, we're just kind of turning that project back to them. But we realize that one county road has a s- traffic issue and egress onto their highway. We're willing to participate up to that level. But we're not gonna leave the money with them while they're, because the other thing, every government group loves alternative funding. So if they're gonna redesign this and truncate the project, I think we'll end up with, with four point nine million we have left in the, was one estimate I heard. We'll end up with a five million dollar stop sign, no sidewalks, and nothing else. So I think we terminate the project and take a fresh run at it onto this new concept plan.
So if that's, you know, if that's.
I need Mr. Gaddy up here. If we terminate this project, how much are we subject to losing then? I think it was around four million dollars.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, John Gidney, uh, Amador County Transportation Commission. Uh, we talked about the p- potential of uh closing the project out if, if termination is the decision. And that would be a process that would take uh probably several years.
Right.
We've talked about that, the accounting of the previous funds and responsibilities of how we move forward. It would take a while. So I, I'm not sure how long that would take. But that money does stay there programmed for that phase, as we talked about too. That was recently an action taken by the California Transportation Commission to move your regional Amador re- regional improvement program shares to the construction phase. So that's, they're preserved there, but again, the timing on it is, is interesting on how long the.
But if we terminate the project, how many, how many funds do we revert back and lose those funds?
That's, that's the question is, uh, through the closeout process, how much of that, the rip fu- those rip funds?
I think that was in our last, the documents in our last meeting. I, I thought it was around three to four million dollars.
Can't be sure how much it would be or how long it would take, but that money would eventually, some, some or all of it would revert back to the county for program.
Back to ACTC.
For programming to.
It was three point two that we've spent already, and there's four point nine in the wind. But it, with the closeout, there's design chargebacks.
Right.
So it's hard to say, but an estimate that I heard that we should be somewhere between three and a half, four million net back to ACTC.
Correct, right.
Yeah, so.
And we're gonna lose some money along with that too, that we would have had in this project. I just, I can't support rejecting, I can support rejecting the bids, but I'd like to scale the project back rather than just do away with the project, you know? And keep talking to Caltrans, if that doesn't work, then we might change our, our minds in a couple of months. But you know what? You need to point out to them, look, we've had our money. You've redirected money in the past for, for bridges away from Amador County because they were over budget down in Stanislaus County. The same should apply to us. We should get that same consideration and respect.
Think that sixty-four billion dollar shortfall of budgets is gonna cloud the issue some too.
Oh, yeah. Any more Board Member comments?
I'm, I'm in favor of rejecting all bids and directing staff to scale the project back myself.
Okay.
You're gonna end up with a five million dollar stoplight.
Okay, at this time.
Well, it's, it's better than three million dollars of nothing.
What three million? We already spent it for the right of way they're gonna use it for their sidewalks if they want sidewalks.
But they don't, it doesn't guarantee they do anything. They could just sit there, retar the road, and thank you very much for playing the game. So we've done absolutely nothing for the folks of Pine Grove.
Okay, well, I'd trade five million for three million, but.
You know, at this time, I believe we have some, um, folks on Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have Ms. Evatt. Please go ahead when ready.
Uh, Catherine, you there?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
A little bit.
Okay. I just wanted to remind you what the Amador County General Plan envisions for Pine Grove. And this is a direct, um, I'm just gonna read to you from the land use element of your county general plan, which is supposed to guide your decisions. It says, land uses along an approximately one-mile stretch of the highway include commercial uses such as individual retail stores, restaurants, small service and office buildings, and smaller strip shopping centers. Although a variety of services and activities are available along both sides of the highway, State Route eighty-eight dominates the landscape and a person running multiple errands must make several short trips by car. Where sidewalks are available, they do not connect multiple services or offer a meaningful alternative to the automobile. The Pine Grove Town Center will provide a downtown for the up-country area, offering a central site where services will be available to up-country residents. The town center is envisioned to include a cluster of mixed land uses with cohesive design elements to create a defined main street establishing a sense of place specific to Pine Grove. The Pine Grove Town Center will encourage infill development of additional services, stores, offices, and housing. And it goes on to say that the county will establish design guidelines for new commercial development in the town center, specifying that new buildings will be built closer to the street with a front of buildings facing State Route eighty-eight, which will be upgraded to include sidewalks. Rear parking areas will be screened. Sidewalks will be a required part of new projects connecting new and existing buildings. The county will encourage use of shared driveways and access easements. Anyway, it goes on about that. And I just, it's disappointing to see the county just abandon its general plan. I mean, the general plan's been in place for years now. This has been in the general plan. General plan was adopted after many years of discussion. And to just say, well, let's just go back to having Highway eighty-eight just be a highway through town and discard the goals of the general plan are really sad. And I'll add here that, you know, I'm piping up from home and you can probably see there are precious few people from Pine Grove who are speaking up on this project because they feel like you've completely abandoned them and the twenty years of work they put into this project. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Catherine. Any, nobody else on Zoom, it looks like?
Not at this time.
Any other members of the public? Uh, we have one, sir.
You have one.
Russell Parker. Uh, in context of scaling back, uh, a thought that occurred to me here, if, if part of the big issue that was being addressed by Director Vila is that a hardscape sidewalk that incurs all these additional things like the storm sewers and such like, and that's what's driving a lot of the cost. In that scale back, it might be worth looking at something like doing boardwalk i- i- as a sidewalk. If, if, you know, if that doesn't trigger, for example, the need for storm sewer-ing and things like that, it might be able to accomplish, you know, eighty percent of what the sidewalk would do or seventy percent of what the sidewalk would do without having the follow, you know, the additional things that make that aspect of the project so much more expensive. So it wouldn't obviously be as, as nice as full sidewalks and things, but would likely be better than nothing. So would probably be worth assessing at least just to, I would never have thought that the sidewalk was that big a portion. But if that's, if all those extra things that put a hardscaping sidewalk in cause, maybe doing really nice raised boardwalk could be done at a lot. lower cost. I don't know, but it might be worth getting a bid on. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Well, you know, this, this thing was, this project was going before I became a supervisor. I guess I got wings and flew. Maybe it shouldn't have flown in the first place. I know there's been, there's been a pretty, there's a need without a doubt for some help with the school. One thing that's been kind of glaring the whole time is we've never heard nothing from the school district. Zip. They never came to play. Kind of a little bit dismayed, but they didn't. Early on, the project was a lot bigger. I mean, originally, I thought, I was kind of new. It appeared to be a Caltrans project. I remember the time thinking, God, they're doing a lot. Seemed like Caltrans was wasting a lot of money there. And I thought, well, it's kind of a waste of taxpayer dollars. And I thought, well, should I fight it? And I thought, as a supervisor? I thought, well, I guess maybe it was, might be doing some, some good for Pine Grove, so why should I fight Caltrans if they're going to break the bank in Cal, their bank in Pine Grove? And later on, found out, hey, actually, it's money that the county can control or does control. And at that point, it's like, oh, damn. And another supervisor, supervisor and I says, you know, this is kind of, it's going to impoverish our local county roads. Money that could be used on local county roads is going to be going on this project for probably 30 years. And we started pushing back and saying, there's a problem here. And we made the project smaller and smaller. And finally, couldn't kill at that time. I thought, well, okay, maybe it'll do some good for the school there because that is a problem. And I kind of stopped fighting it and was actually, to a certain degree, supportive of it. And then along the way, and there's a couple of people I know that are registered civil engineers, and I respect their judgment and their competent. The first guy that told me, hey, what you're doing up there is not going to solve the traffic problem at the school. It's just going to transfer it over on the Pine Grove Volcano Road. And he says, you know, plus he said, the cut slope, there's 3 and a 3, 3 and 1/4 to 1. He's at red clay soil. It's not going to hold up. You're going to have bank failure. It comes down off the school down the Pine Grove Volcano Road. And plus, it's a really icy spot, which is, it's kind of a cold spot there. And this one engineer telling me that concerned me. But I thought, well, engineers have different sort of opinions, and we've had engineers look at it, and this is, this is the golden baby. And then I had another engineer I know, who I think is very competent also. And I don't think they compare notes. Told me almost the same thing. And I thought, oh, boy, two people are saying the golden baby is not golden. And I thought about what they said and thought, you know, I can't... The reasoning and logic appears good. And at that point, I decided, you know what? I'm opposed to the project again. And I understand there's a problem there, but I don't, I think what we're looking to do on there is not going to solve that problem because you're still going to have that traffic coming, coming off of the school, going on the Pine Grove Volcano Road. And where do they go from there? Everybody's going to want to go back up to 88, try to make a left turn on Pine Grove Volcano Road. Somebody decided to go down off, down on the Pine Grove Volcano Road, down towards Volcano in the winter. You try to avoid that if you can, because it becomes pretty icy in there. But I, and I don't think, it's not going to stop the traffic back up on Highway 88 because that's people trying to get into school, and they park there and wait for the school to open. So I don't think that's going to really change. So personally, I'd like to see us reject all bids, stop the project, put it on a shelf. And if Caltrans comes up with something they want to do and that work is there available for them, we can hand it off to them and let them carry that ball. And that's where I'm at.
Don, can you answer a question? Back to the funding. Which funds are we going to lose on this? The federal funding, the STIP shares, the RIP shares? The RIP is ours, so what, for what funds are we absolutely going to lose on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The funds that you'd absolutely lose are the federal funds. There's some congestion mitigation air quality funds. Those would likely expire.
Give us rough numbers if you could, as you go along.
About $800,000 or so. $700,000, I think, exact amount. But that, those funds could be transferred to another project, but it's very cumbersome, and there's a time issue on that. I think those would be lost.
Could be, could be lost then.
Would, should, would be lost.
Should, probably?
Should probably.
Okay.
There's, yeah. The RIP funds, the 2.8, 4.8 million in RIP, again, those are, those are regional shares. Those would ultimately be available to come back after the closeout. There's a million dollars out of their, our regional mitigation fee program. A million dollars, this program, that would come back directly to the fee program. There's a little, a chunk of local money that would come back. Caltrans has committed 1.25 million in a shop program that would go back to their program. So really, realistically, that would just be the federal money. And hip, there's about...
And the shop money. And the shop money. So you're talking about, talking about 2 to 2.5.
You already mentioned the Caltrans.
Yeah, 1.25 million in shop that Caltrans, that would go back to their program. But could I address another, another issue? I'm actually kind of annoyed, esteemed, actually, with the response that Director Vela got from Grace regarding the coolness of headquarters and their response.
Grace Manceo at District 10?
Because I remember, as you mentioned the history of this, when this project was about $40 million back in 2014 or so, I remember being at a meeting at Caltrans Headquarters with a former director, Charles Field, ACTC. And at the time, they were presenting the program, the funding program. And again, it was 40 million total. And ACTC had somehow identified potentially maybe 20 to 30 million they could cobble together to complete the project. And there was a looming $10 million shortfall.
Just question on that. Where were that 20 or 30 million to come from?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. It was...
I think it would, I think it was, was going to basically, oh, earmark our dollars we have that, that come in, like the STIP, RIP money and STIP money towards that project for, for years.
Right.
And those are funds that could, could be going to county roads. And that's one of the reasons why years ago, I started fighting it because, and John Plaz, Supervisor Plaz, was kind of the first one to really say, hey, what's going on here? And John was right. He's on ACTC at that time. Because that was going to take the funds that could, and we got county roads that are a mess. We got one right now in New Chicago. I went and looked. There's a culvert that Eddie Santini and I shoved rocks in a hole that goes down into a culvert that's rotted out. And the, the patch is still working. The county road group put some hot mix over it. And they were going through another winter with a culvert with a hole and with rocks patching it up. And there's, and there's culverts like that all over this county. And so I thought, you know, if we go on and do this $40 million project on Highway 88, we're going to have a real lack of funding, even bigger lack of funding for our county roads. And that's why I was like, wait, stop, we can't do this.
But at that time, there was going to be a full-fledged bypass too.
Actually, that...
And it's worked its way down to where it is now.
Right, it worked down from a full, full bypass was about the $70 million option. But we got it down to 40, and that was through, that was the through, the town option.
Yeah, it was like 80 to 100 million for full bypass. And that got down to 40 million. And if we didn't went ahead with that $40 million project, a lot of that $40 million would have came out of money that could be going towards the local county roads.
Yeah.
And by making it smaller, which we have, it was going to be able to put more money towards local county roads quicker. If we, and if we put this project on a shelf and hand it off to Caltrans, it'll make more, more money available to county, local county roads even faster. Which, you know, I, I look at what the projects, I look at the problem in Pine Grove. Yes, there's a problem with traffic there, trying, trying to get into school. It's a problem. It's also, it's also a state highway. And then I say, okay, we can go spend millions there. Or I look at, we got culverts with rocks in them. But probably, it may wash out this year. Right down the road, there's another culvert by below Santini's house that's got a hole in the side of it. It's starting to wash around. And there's culverts like that all over the place. And I'm not blaming Public Works. They haven't had enough money for a long time. So I don't blame them at all. It's just, so that's why I'm kind of saying, hey, and I, I hate to see some money go away that we put towards a project. I just, I talk to some people in Pine Grove, and they're like, yeah, but who's going to use those sidewalks along Highway 88? I'm not going to because I don't want to walk alongside that traffic. And I'm going, okay, so we're building this project. And how many people do you see walking along Pine Grove up there? From business to business, I don't see many. And if you look at the issues Pine Grove has with their water supply, interseptic supply, there's probably not going to be a whole lot of major building going on of infill up there. It's just, sometimes we make mistakes in life. And I think we all do it. We've all made a mistake here and there. And I think sometimes the best thing you do, you make a mistake, is try to mitigate, mitigate the damage. So that's where I'm at.
If I could just follow up?
I think we've heard loud and clear where you're at. Why don't we let the speaker say something?
Yeah. Well, Mr. Forrester, everybody's had a lot to say.
The chair should say less and manage...
I let everybody have their say. He had said his say. At some point, I won't have a say. So we've heard from the public, we've heard from other people, and we've heard from the board. I won't have a little to say, so.
I, I just wanted to support your, your comments and Supervisor Cruz's comments that Caltrans has, has a, has a responsibility here to step up. Years ago, in the meeting with Charles Field with Headquarters, there was a $10 million shortfall that was identified. And Headquarters staff knew that, that we were cobbling this together and encouraged Charles to continue moving forward with the project with an implicit, not a guarantee, but implicit support that that $10 million would show up at the end of the day. We were in environmental phase at the time. We were moving toward design. We were far away from construction. And Headquarters staff encouraged Charles clearly to continue moving forward with it. So it wasn't just the political support that you were hearing from community members in Pine Grove, but Caltrans themselves said, hey, we're with you. We'll be there at the end of the day. And here we are at the end of the day, and they just told you, your Public Works Director, sorry, you're on your own. I find that insulting. I, I find that aggravating to no end. And, and to your point, Supervisor Cruz, there have been delays in this, to get this to this point, that are entirely the responsibility of Caltrans, changing their design teams, changing their project managers, different direct, district directors, constant changes. And, and your staff here, Mark, can, can go down the litany of, of the delays that have been caused. We should have been to construction on this at least a year ago and probably sooner. So for them now to, to just throw up their hands and say, sorry, we can't help you, that's, I think that's inconscionable, and I think they should be held to task on that. This project has been developed entirely through your, your Regional Improvement Program funds from environmental to design to right-of-way acquisition, and now another $5 million in construction, all with your local money. The only thing Caltrans is kicking in at the end of the day is 1.25 million comparatively. We're talking 12 to 14 million of local money, and they're throwing in a pittance of a million. I don't, I, I think there should be, I think there should be some pushback here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Along that line, Mr. Gedney, to bulwark what you're saying. I don't remember quite what the object was, but the county was working with Caltrans years ago on some, some type of report we got to file. And they'd sent it down, and the Caltrans gentleman would say, it's, it's not good, it's not, it's not correct, and send it back. Wouldn't say why. So the county staff would pour through this report, and they'd dot an i or cross a t or add a comma. And maybe a word was misspelled, and they'd send it back down to Caltrans. He says, well, it's not, it's not correct, and send it, and reject it. This went on, I think, four times. And he wouldn't say why. So finally, the fifth time, they were, they were just exasperated. They're like, we've been through this, we can't find anything. We're done, we're just quit. And the gentleman said, it's fine, we'll take it like it is. So I think what was going on, I think you had a person at Caltrans was showing, he was doing his job by rejecting it with no reason. And the county was working away. I think it was just a, because the fifth time, he said, no changes. It's fine, accept it. After he said it was not right. So sometimes I think it's job security at play. And we paid, we ended up paying the price of staff time and, and work and consultant time.
Absolutely right.
So, thank you.
Mr. Gedney, before you run off, I have one question for you. As head of the Transportation Commission, if we got, say, $4 million net back to us out of the local funds, we could probably make a difference in the county roads in the next two years. Get some real value out of that rather than leave it in a fund for Caltrans.
Again, I have no faith that that money would come back soon to the region.
No, I figured it'd be two years.
The delays and the obfuscation we find with them, the paperwork that they'd require, I, I don't count on that.
But let's play this out. They want to truncate it.
I think truncating is probably the best way to go, frankly.
Wow.
Our, our recommendation. And I think putting some pressure on Caltrans to stand up.
Couldn't you see that we would end up with a, no money back for the local roads and a $5 million stoplight?
I, if I looked in my crystal ball, I think that would be the likely...
Because with the alternative funding, we're 200,000 more we need. We'll just take it out of the local funds. I can just see that happening. And I'd like to be the player where we have control of our money and dole it back out to them.
Actually, I think, I like your idea of maybe working with them on that pavement job.
I'm not trying to save money. I'm just trying to get control of that money again.
Yeah. I like your idea of, of looking and negotiating on that pavement job. They have a policy to reach out to local agencies now, early in advance of these pavement jobs to see if there's features that the locals would like to add. And I think this is a great opportunity to tell them, we want to add a signal there to your pavement job. Sure.
Yeah, but not all that money's going to come back to the county of Amador for roads. The city's going to be looking for money too.
That's true, that's true too.
Well...
But I, I agree.
Rather give it to them than Caltrans.
I, we're, we're at our wits' end here. This is, this has just gotten ludicrous, the ways that they...
Sometime, there's a bad deal that in business, you just have to walk away.
Maybe, maybe change...
Link your wounds and move on.
I agree. Maybe turn the tables on them and see if there's a different strategy here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, the only thing I would like to add on to that is, if we do that, the Caltrans will not do anything for the school. They don't give a damn about the school. So what will have to happen is if we did exactly the game that you're talking about, because it's been proven over and over in this county, that they will make a right turn only out of the school as it exists. So then you have the buses having to make a U-turn somewhere. Where in Pine Grove do you make a U-turn with a bus?
Well, that's a traffic issue. They'd have to have that in the design.
No, that is not their responsibility.
Do you know that for sure?
Yeah, look at Walgreens. How do you make a left out of Walgreens into anywhere? And that was a state requirement.
On a state highway, okay. But we're going to wait $5 million?
Well, I'm just looking for the perfect storm that we kill somebody right there at the school. So, you know, that's for our reasoning that we're not going to do this project. Somebody's going to get killed there making that left-hand turn. And it's not today, not tomorrow, but I don't know when.
You've heard from one person from the state, Grace Mancio. We're kind of in a perfect storm right now because we have our Caltrans District 10 Director retiring. I think he would have been an advocate for us. But I think we can find those advocates and make something out of this project if we streamline it back and make it affordable. We've already, if we go, if we just say it's done, we're just screwing away money. We're throwing away money, that hard fought for money that has been spent to make this project go. We can scale it back and make it work.
On a state highway instead of spending it on county roads?
You know what? We've already been down that path. This is a 20-year, this is a 20-year project. Let's make it work. I think it's a bad business decision to take the money we've spent on already and just throw it away.
Well. I remember hearing that probably 10 years ago, and it's like, well, the finish line's right there. Let's just keep going. And that finish line has gotten farther and farther, and more money and more money. I don't know. That's part of it, too. And the other problem is, once we put that traffic on Pine Grove Volcano Road, most people are going to want to turn left. And that means they're going to be turning, so people will be coming off I-88 on the Pine Grove Volcano Road, and you're going to have a lot of people trying to make a left turn in front of them. So you probably have a bottleneck there. I don't know. It's.
This project was never about reducing the traffic. It's more about managing the traffic through having stoplights, helping the school so that when they have students going in and students coming out, it's organized and safe.
Any more members of public? Seeing then, any more comments?
What I would like to do is reject all the bids and direct staff to work with Caltrans on the funding issue to scale this project back.
I'll second that.
Mike, okay, under discussion. Greg, if this motion fails today, as I think it's going to fail. We need to reject the bids.
I think, I was just talking to Cao Eily. I think what you would do is, his suggestion was to split the motion, just do the first part to reject the bids and then make a separate motion to what the next step is.
Well, we know the second motion would fail from whoever makes it. So I would rather have at that point this item directed to come back to our next meeting where we have a full board.
Well, we have to, we have to reject, I think probably have to reject all bids anyway.
You should do that first part, probably.
Yeah.
So I would move, I would move then to reject all bids.
I'll second.
And bring it back?
That substitute motion.
You can, you can do all that in one?
Do all what? I was just told we have to bifurcate it.
Well, to bring back, not to bring back.
Well, that's going to. Okay. Then I'll replace my motion with the move to reject all bids and bring this discussion back to our next meeting for a, for more discussion and action by the board.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion by Forrester and a second by Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Nay?
See, I could see that one coming, so what's the use?
Then we split it off and just reject bids and then direct staff to do what you want us to do on a separate, separate.
Who does that direction come from?
To reject all bids? Is there, yeah?
Now, who does that direction come from to bring this item back?
Well, right now, I guess staff will just.
E that or have to work something out? E that, or else maybe the board will have to kind of come to an agreement of some sort.
Well, I would like to come back on the agenda for discussion at the next meeting. That work with the chair?
Not unless it's going to be something substantive. If we're just going to argue, and you've got three votes in Frank, why would we agree to that?
Either that or we can make a motion to have a new chair at the next meeting. If you're going to dictate what goes on the calendar and what doesn't go on the calendar. I think you have two board members here that wanted to come back for discussion.
About what, though?
About a direction, because there's no clear direction to staff right now.
We'll probably need something of some sort. Pat?
You have a comment, Chair, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Hopkins. Mark Hopkins, Public Works. I might have a solution. If we go ahead and reject all bids, that'll kill that. Give me until March to be able to talk to the contractors, find out what they're, what they were looking at, things like that. Come back to you for a final decision on, with the information from them, truncating it, just doing the intersection and laying it out one last time. If you still do not want to move forward with it, we can kill it then. Two months is not going to clutter the money. So that is, at least allows me to give you all of the information.
How do you talk to the contractors without, talk to all of the contractors? Is that what you're saying?
Actually, yes. We would go ahead and all of the bidders, we can actually, once we reject all the bids, we can actually reach out to them, find out what their assumptions were on why bids were high, find out if there's any insider knowledge that they might have that we're not privy to on where prices are going, things like that. So we can actually do a better formulation of our engineer's estimate and then bring that back to you. So.
For a truncated project?
A truncated project, yes. At least that way you can see where we're at. If we choose where we can see where we have the intersection or nothing at all. And then, because again, two months is not going to clutter the money. I can tell you from experience, we have two federal projects that we've done within the last 10 years that basically took five years to close. So you won't see the money until after it is completely closed. And both of those was, one was an intersection, which was the Ridge Road and New York Ranch, and then a bridge. And it took, I finished up the paperwork for those from 2021. And both of those, if everyone remembers, started way back in the mid 2000s, so.
A long time ago.
Yes.
Wow.
No, if we're truncated, I'm okay, I mean. I'm looking for is the light and to help the school. You know, if, if an engineer says that that's a stupid idea to run the driveway out the back way, then that's, you know, that's something we need to take a look at. And, you know, I just went down to Walker yesterday. There was a whole bunch of rip wraps sitting along there, you know, that could be put on, on the side of the bank or anything else to keep erosion happening. But I'm looking for, you know, we can't change the amount of traffic that rolls through Pine Grove.
No.
There's no way that that will ever happen.
If anything, it's going to.
But allowing, allowing people to make, to get a left safely out of there to go back up to the up country is paramount to me. You know, I watch the buses sitting there. You know, I watch all these things. When we get a snow event and that's where all the buses group, they don't go up to the up country. They sit there. So you double what buses are sitting there at Pine Grove School. All those parents that are up country are now shelling their kids down to those buses there in Pine Grove. So that just makes things different. Now, I, I want to make sure that we do make a, a good exit onto Pine Grove Volcano Road. You know, that was, I'm hoping an engineer has looked at that better than I, because I'm not an engineer.
Well, both of them, so to answer your, both of them have been stamped. The Geotech Report was stamped by a geologist, registered geologist. So it's their license.
Right.
Ultimately, I have other ideas that would, if we just focus on the intersection, I'll make Caltrans tell me what they, what we can and can't do.
I mean, we could leave it as is.
If we don't have to go out.
And, and Caltrans puts a roundabout sitting there. That will fix all the problems, too.
That was a plan at one point.
Uh, I understand.
But again, we can end up, I would make Caltrans tell me no on certain items if it were just for the signal. And give me hard facts. Just because somebody doesn't like it isn't going to be good enough. But again, allow me this opportunity to bring this to you for one last time. Unfortunately, it is one last time. But I'd rather have you have all of the information. That way, moving forward. You have a clear conscience. You had all the evidence presented in front of you, all of the data. You made a sound decision. No emotions involved. So.
There's no emotion involved in my decision now?
Well.
And I will say one thing as far as the engineer's stamp. When we did the project up there, the slough on Shake Ridge Road a number of years back, I remember looking at it. I was there, and they're put, and they had those, the gabions and the steel wires. And I looked at it, I thought, oh, it seemed kind of hinky. I was talking to one engineer's there, and they're putting in this beautiful garden soil. I'm like, man, you know, that's, is that going to hold? Because that's some pretty, I mean, I like dirt for my garden. Oh, yeah, you know, we've done hundreds of these. They're bulletproof, yada, yada, yada. And I thought, well, he is an engineer, and I guess, yada, yada, they're professionals, and I'm probably mistaken in what I'm seeing. And the next year, it all went to hell, and one of the ones started sliding off the hill a little bit. And I thought, well, maybe it wasn't mistaken. But they still got their stamp. I mean, everybody kind of scattered like quail on that project.
And actually, the evidence that we had borings done for, the problem actually went down 85 feet deep. So we only did the top 20. It was still, we weren't even touching where it had slipped. And then everything above that, I'm looking at it as compaction.
Well, also, that dirt, I remember when I went up through that problem, I stepped, stepped off one of the banks, and I went about that deep where they'd put the soil. So.
So.
It should have some rock or something mixing that soil for a little more substance.
Can we get back to Pine Grove, and are you ready for another motion?
Supervisor Forrester, would his idea satisfy you of bringing it back?
Yes. So I would move again to reject all bids and direct staff to work with Caltrans and other entities to truncate this project.
Second.
That was the way it was stated.
Okay, so we have a motion by Forrester, second by Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Say aye.
Pardon?
I mean, aye. Did you call for the vote? Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Yeah. I'm okay with it, so it'll carry 4-0. And maybe if we can't come to something we like as far as truncing, truncing this thing, that might be it. So go ahead and work with Caltrans, see if we can come up with something that's acceptable. And what was the timeline?
That was essentially the first motion I made anyway to work to scale this project back, so.
But we're truncating just to the intersection and the school district access and egress. Because originally, the motion was to truncate it back to where we could afford it.
Is that just a clarification?
Well, truncate, scale back, whatever, whatever works on this project. Let staff work with, with our contractors who bid on this project and bring the information back. At that point, we'll have enough information to make a sound decision.
Fair enough.
So we're looking, basically, a tentative look, see where we're at. We're not saying we'll be going, your motion's not going for the truncated project period, but investigate and see what the options are.
Right. And that's even on the sidewalk. So I'm sure he's going to come back and say the contractor said this was a game killer for most.
Okay. I'm okay with that. Motion carries 4-0-1. With that. Everybody still doing good? Moving on to item 5F, State Route 88, Pine Grove Improvement Project. amended District 10 Cooperative Agreement 10-0541A3.
Is it, would it be appropriate to just table this at this time, or does it need a nov?
Well, it was originally, this is Supervisor Brown, it was originally on consent. This is just keeping the money on the project. All it is, is just an agreement to keep, you know, the money from starting to fall off, saying that we're going to try something. And then we can kill this in March if, at that time that it does not.
Able to tell the March meeting.
Right. Well, I don't know if we take, I think we have to approve it. We have to approve it, but we can kill it. It doesn't make us spend the money. It just says we, we're planning to spend the money.
Well, again, Mark Hopkins. What this agreement basically says is it moves over the cost savings that we have of the 1.2 million dollars from right-of-way. It now allocates it for this project. It's not saying you are going to commit to the project or not. It's just saying that that money is locked in, so we don't lose it. Because at this point, you have in the next four years, most of your money that is not being used is going to go down to Southern California. You have two world-class events happening in the next four years. So that whole area is going to be looking to develop and take any money that is going to be not used going somewhere else.
You're talking about the Olympics and that kind of stuff?
World Cup in 2026, Olympics in 2024. So they're going to ship all money down there and utilize all of that as best as they can. So if it's not locked in, they have a much harder time, if it's locked in, they have a much harder time of moving it. So.
This, the rip shares, are this coming from rip shares, or where's it coming from?
The cost savings from the, the right-of-way acquisition. So, so that, no matter what, if we were to not do this, that money will go away. So that is a, that is a given.
Like to make the motion, the cooperative agreement in the current form, and authorize the chair to sign a final version of the agreement by what signature or e-signature? Oh, sorry.
Members of public? The night on Zoom. Okay, so we have a motion, second. I think Pat was the second Supervisor Crew. Anyway, call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. And he carries 4-0-1. And the motion was by Brown, and you were the second Supervisor Crew. Moving down, we have item 5G. This Administrative Agency Discussion of Possible Action Relative to Amendment Section 2.68.020, Chapter 2.68, as relates to salaries of elected officials.
Except supervisors.
Yeah, this basically is, adds in a 30-year longevity clause. It's for non-local officials. Do you want to talk to this, Greg?
So this is just to implement the, the board sort of approved that, adding that step for other units, management, mid-management, the bargaining units. But because the elected officials, to change it, you have to do the ordinance. So this is, this is just implementing that action that you've, it was, a lot of those resolutions were on consent already approved. So this is just, it just adds that longevity step and cleans up some things that were in the ordinance that you approved last time about a wage increase that already happened. So we just took that reference out.
Yeah, I didn't like when we did it, so. Anyway, any members of public like to comment on it? Sir?
Russ Parker? And this may already have been addressed in an update since what I read on it, but the, because it sounded like you were, that the increase did not apply to Board of Supervisors? Because the, the, the one that I looked at last that was published had the rate, the salary increase for Board of Supervisors as well?
The Board of Supervisors ordinance is, that's a separate ordinance, so it's not addressed in here.
Not addressed in here? Okay, is that coming up?
No. Board of Supervisors is scrutinized much more than everyone else.
Okay, I was, I was going to, because my comment was going to be that, you know, the step increases for city employees, I think makes a lot of sense, but for the, for elected officials like the Board of Supervisors, I think that is potentially different. And since I'm running to be on the board, you know, that, that might be seen as being against my own self-interest if I got elected, but I, I don't, I don't know that we, that it would be appropriate to have the, the elected folks on the board have the step increases at, you know, the 20, you know, 12, 16, and 20-year marks, so.
Always a contentious issue talking about Board of Supervisors.
To the board.
Pay.
Right.
Yeah, we haven't had a pay raise in five years.
And I wouldn't expect one in the next five years.
So I think there's a difference between raising the base pay of the Board of Supervisors versus having it be the, for term and service, you know, the one I was looking, you know, that.
Well, we, we do have a term and service. We just don't have it up to 30 years.
Okay. Anyway, thank you.
And Greg, this is only, even though it says salaries of elected officers, it doesn't address elected officials. It's actions, only permanent employees. Is that correct?
No, this is, this ordinance is for the assessor audit. No, this is, this ordinance is for the assessor, auditor, clerk, or district attorney.
It's kind of a little bit confusing the way it's worded, so. So this would be addressing elected officials, would be able to, at this point, also be able to get to 30-year raise in pay?
Yes.
30 years of service.
All except the supervisors.
Okay, so just, I saw in here, it's to be clarified, further permanent employees shall receive, so, but, okay. Any other members of public? No Zoom?
Would approve the action.
Second.
Motion by Forster, second by Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to vote no on this, I think I voted no before, so it's going to carry Moving on, item 5.
Would approve confidential minutes with, with minor corrections.
Second.
Which minutes? I said confidential.
Not, I'm sorry, regular minutes.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Forster, second by Crew to approve the minutes as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries 4-0-1. Well, at that time, the board is adjourned until, we're adjourned until Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024, at 9 o'clock. Thank you.